So Heather, Gaffey is getting on now for the work session.
This is, this is a different setting. Michael Yon, so however you wanna proceed. Oh, we got two minutes? Okay, that's good. Yeah, I just got back from Canyon City just now. How's it going?
Yeah, how are you?
Good, thank you.
Oh, thank you.
She don't need to leave it on the whole time, right? Just when we're talking is what we've been doing. Okay, so. I wasn't sure if something changed. You don't know if anything's changing. Okay.
Are you going on the field trip that's at four thirty tomorrow night?
I'm not looking forward to waking up to four thirty in the morning. You guys are lucky you don't have to deal with that.
Okay, all right, it's six o'clock and we'll go ahead and start this work session on the water treatment future. I'll turn it over to our city manager.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm probably not gonna do much talking. I'm gonna just turn it right over to Harry.
Did you wanna make any comments in regards to the way we're gonna run this?
Thank you, thank you. This is gonna be our first work session to try to attempt folding in a timeframe for public comment. We're gonna see how the conversation goes around six forty. I'll kinda see if we've got time to pause it. We'll open it up for public comment. It will be handled the same way as our regular meeting, which is it's not a back and forth kind of conversation. It'll be a three minute to where someone can share ideas, feedback, questions they have, that kinda thing. Then we'll close the public comment and bring it back for council to discuss what they feel like they need to discuss.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Well, I'll get started. One of the things we've been looking at as a public works department and looking at our water treatment plan is I wanna be clear that what we have currently is working other than a few obstacles that we, that we always run into. One, everybody's aware of is the colored water. You know, we all get calls on that. So the second part of that would be using the chemicals that we use to remove the arsenic within the water. Looking at possible technology out there, maybe some changes within the, within the plant. But I just wanna be clear with council, we're not necessarily having to make a change. This is just an idea. We have some potential for progression with our plant and just one, really want some feedback. Do we wanna move forward in looking into this process? So Roy's got a presentation put together, kind of a little bit of a history. And then also what we're looking at as far as evolution in the plant and potentially what that might cost, so.
Thank you. Well, good afternoon, evening. Roy Sanchez, City of Alamosa, run the water treatment facility. And I'm here to talk a little bit about the city of Alamosa using an alternative chemical for the treatment of their arsenic in our plant. So start by giving a little bit of background at the water treatment facility. May have heard this before, but we'll do it real quick again. Current treatment facility opened in two thousand and eight with the removal of arsenic to below the ten per million MCL. Currently, we use what I call a bulk ferric chloride for removal. Bulk means it's brought in by a semi truck and bulk four thousand gallons at a time, such as such. The arsenic binds to the ferric and then we use ultra filtration to separate out the ferric that has the arsenic bound to it. And right now, we're currently meeting all state safe water drinking water standards. There's a picture of the membranes on the site too, so. So here's some of the challenges that we have at the water treatment facility with the current bulk ferric chloride. One of them is the purity of the chemical. I like to call it a dirty chemical that really doesn't have very many regulations on it, unregulated. And it can be really corrosive chemical impact within the treatment facility itself. If you look at that picture on the right, you can see the rafters. They were painted blue at one time. You can see the redness kinda coming off of this chemical when it comes to contact with any type of iron. It wants to put it back into rust state, so. Couple more challenges of the bulk ferric chloride and security of supply. It's in a commodity controlled market and it's chemical, it's chemical composition. The use of this ferric chloride is NSF approved, like Harry said before, like we're looking at new things, but we have is good, but we're looking at something better. And if you look on the right there, there's a metals comparison study showing the difference between the chemical that we do use on the green versus this chemical we're looking at, which is in the blue and there's a contaminant difference on the right. So we're pretty much within the ninety percent tolerable difference of contaminants within the, using the, the different chemical. So what have we done to get to this point? We performed a small scale pilot study in-house in January twenty twenty-three and currently working with Alkmetology Systems or AMS. AMS has a technology to make a ferric chemical on demand within the facility. This technology can be used to support arsenic removal within the water treatment facility. The ferric chemical is a cleaner chemical than the bulk ferric chloride. The results from the pilot study confirm the ferric reagent can bind to and remove arsenic equal to or better than bulk ferric chloride that we currently use. This ferric reagent can be a suitable replacement to the bulk ferric chloride that we currently with using the facility. So what does this look like? Water treatment facility impacts. Exposing the membranes with a cleaner chemical can positively affect membrane health and promote longer membrane life in the facility. The removal of the corrosive bulk ferric chloride within the facility can reduce the deterioration of the chemical room that we just saw in that one picture. Can have reduction in metals being sent down to the wastewater treatment plant. That's a very important one. And provide consistent chemical composition and lower the doses within the facility itself. It can lessen or remove the reliance on bulk ferric chloride. What this process entails, we have engineering design process. All changes to the treatment facility must be engineered and designed by a professional engineer, engineering firm holding a state of Colorado professional license. The next would be the CDPH approval. All engineering designs must be submitted IP and approved by CDPH prior to construction. Then we, professional engineer. And then the implementation and monitoring stage after CDPH approval. Installation can be performed following by a full-scale demonstrative monitoring period. This monitoring period will ensure components were installed correctly and working as designed by the engineer.
I'm gonna step in just a little bit before we get into the financial, kinda the, the impact if we were to move forward with this technology is. When we talk about technology, so right now we bring in bulk ferric chloride and, and we use that within our water treatment process, the binding arsenic goes through the filtration membranes and out, out into the distribution system. The technology we're looking at is what, there's gonna be generators and we take pure plate steel, like a high quality plate steel. And through electrolysis, it breaks down that steel, utilize in the iron molecules within that. Now we're making that iron, which is cleaner and pure to bond to the arsenic for removal. So one of the things we probably left out in there is what is, what is the new technology kinda look like? It's, it's basically five individual generator units to replace a bulk chemical, so. When we look at the financial costs, we got a, we got a price from AMS and we're looking roughly at six hundred and forty thousand dollars and that's just for the generator and for them to come and set it up, kinda commission the site. On top of that, we have the engineering requirements that goes through the state services that you had seen earned there, plus the design and implementation of the construction. So there's three components. We don't know exactly what the engineering cost and the construction cost is gonna be because we'll have to bring in quite a bit of electrical supply for these generators and stuff like that. We're working on it. We just haven't been able to round those numbers up, so. When I, when I talk a little bit about the financials, we, in our CIP, currently we have about six hundred thousand dollars set aside for the future progression of the, of the plant that are kinda earmarked, at least the first hundred thousand possibly for engineering. And then we're looking at the other half million for technology or rebuilding that room, whatever. We have it set aside for the, the greater need, so. How do we pay for all this? So AMS, they're the designer of this technology. There's a group out there called IL Utility Partnership and they're a global company. And what they do is they provide funding and resources and support for small companies like AMS to get this new technology out to rural areas, you know, worldwide, you know, underserved populations. Their idea and, and intention is to provide new technology that will have a lesser impact on the, impact on the planet. So what they'll do is they'll provide a loan to AMS. AMS will now have the funding to bring the generators to the city of Alamosa. They'll, they'll work with AMS and the city of Alamosa to basically get this pilot study started. So they'll come in, they'll, they'll fund it, AMS will, will set it all up and through a progressive pilot program, make sure that it meets the needs that's promised throughout the contract or what AMS is promising to deliver. If that's successful, then AMS will, will pay AMS back and AMS will pay IL Utility Partnership. So I'm, I'm not really reading the slide. I'm just kinda summarizing what the slide says. The benefit for that for the city is we pay nothing. This doesn't work as promised. They'll come and remove the equipment and we move on to something else. If it does work, at the end of the day, the pilot study works as promised, the state accepts the results of the pilot study. Then we're responsible for that six hundred and forty thousand plus to AMS. And so what we wanna look at is if this is something that the city is interested in, in moving forward with, IL Utilities want some kind of, not a commitment, assurance that the city is serious and that we have the financial means to support the project at the end of the day. So their contractual obligation is really gonna be through AMS to be reimbursed by them. But they want a letter, basically a letter of intent or through that, I think it's a trial and purchase agreement with AMS, knowing the city is serious and that we have the financial means to support the project when it's all completed, so. Benefits, we kinda touched on a couple of them, replacing the current bulk ferric chloride chemical, interchemical, less impact on demand production. That means we're not relying on a, a freight company. What happened a few years ago is one of the producers of bulk chloride went down, that plant. So I wouldn't say it was a monopoly, but our, our choices were very limited. We actually got a bad load of ferric and had to send it out and there was kind of an emergency running around with the city, having them bring us fifty-five gallon drums or five hundred gallon drums of ferric so we could keep the city operational. So this gives us a little bit of control. I think it's, it's a positive thing, also with the quality. Arsenic removal using lower doses reduces color, water issues when the distribution system. I think from the public outside looking in, they don't want as much brown water, you know. No matter what we do, anybody opens up a hydrant, we're gonna get brown water. This isn't the silver bullet or the silver lining, but we estimate through the, the trial study that will at least reduce that iron that gets into the distribu- distribution system by thirty-eight percent. So still gonna have it, but maybe not as great.
And can I add some further layperson language? So for some of this, we're not relying on the chemical. It's, is it a less abrasive type of chemical? So it's not gonna cause the destruction to the plant, but it's also from a safety perspective, safer type of situation using lower doses. So what that means is we don't have to use as much chemical to even get better results type of situation, which is, was, which is always good. And then on the wastewater treatment plant, we don't wanna go down this rabbit hole, but as we evaluate the capital need for our wastewater treatment plant, a lot of what's being sent to them, if we can have a positive impact on that, could dramatically impact what kinda capital investment we need to make in the water tru- wastewater treatment plant. And so that's a whole different rabbit hole, but that's actually a really big deal. And I just wanted to make sure you were emphasizing that.
Well, I was gonna go down the rabbit hole, but. So if you recall, last year we did a metal study because we're getting dinged at our wastewater treatment plant by being non-compliant every once in a while for copper, arsenic. There's, there's a handful of, of metals that we're seeing that's making its way downstream into our wastewater treatment plant. The state is holding our discharge permit until we've come through a certain cycle. Once they, once they, we hit that cycle, they're gonna look at all our testing and say, okay, this is gonna be your new discharge permit and these are gonna be the new requirements and how your plant has to evolve. So the goal here is if we can help reduce or eliminate the downstream metals that's being produced by, through the metal study, we found the bulk of it is through our water treatment process. If we can reduce some of that, it might change the design or the requirements that the state's gonna have us follow and what that impact to our plant is gonna be because we could either be reducing for, or we, we could be evolving the plant to be able to remove all the metals that is coming downstream. But if we can eliminate that, then it's, then it's less. So our price for a plant could be fifteen million and we potentially by doing this could be reduced to, to something that's ten. We know we have to, we have to evolve coming up in the next five years, maybe seven years. We've gotta start down that road, but if we can lessen that and those results are seeing through our, our testing, they, they'll consider that in our requirements of what that plant has to be. And if you look at Montebista and what they're having to do and the cost of their plant, I think that's a good resource to say, do we need to build a forty million dollar plant or can we just upgrade what we currently have, you know, with fifteen million dollars and treat that metal, so. And with the smiley face, any questions? There's a lot of information and we'll certainly answer them.
The only other part is, cause you guys never pat yourself on the back in Public Works and you guys are just so humble. This technology is actually, I think, fairly cutting edge. And I think that's why AMS and some of these other companies are at the table because there is a significant benefit to them to prove that this technology can work worldwide type of situation. And there's other plants that need to remove arsenic. And if this type of technology can work, it's something that can be expanded type of thing. And I think the group that's been working on this has been presenting at a lot of different conferences. They're, they've been written up in national publications and some things like that. And so little Alamosa is, is right there as far as getting our name out there and really thinking outside the box and working with partners to explore this. And so I just wanted to give kudos to, to Public Works and, and being open to this kind of stuff.
Yeah, and kinda touch on that a little bit. AMS through this technology has been published in a few magazines, some white papers, done some national presentations on the, on the technology. It is new. And that's why IL, IL Utilities is willing to fit the bill. Cause that's what they do is they wanna see new tech to, new technology, especially for those in underserved populations, areas that just struggle to meet the minimal requirement. So it is kind of exciting and I, I can't take the credit, really it's Roy who has taken the lead on this. He is, he has made the partnership with AMS and, and done all the, all the legwork. I've just been here as a supporting party, but kudos to Roy and certainly at this point, there's a lot of questions, I'm sure. Do the best we can do to answer them, but ask away.
Okay, we'll start off with Council Crebs.
Are you, are you sure?
Yeah. Oh, I, I saw hers first, sorry about that.
No worries. I'm making sure. Cause I have questions. Okay. Guys, ready? Buckle in. All right. Are there any other water plants that are currently looking at this technology?
As of right now, no.
Okay. If you make this in-house, is it because of the chemical makeup that it won't corrode or further corrode the metals around it?
It will be less corrosive. The process is a less corrosive process to make it than the way it's made now.
Okay. And you can feel free to science me, so.
But I just wanna make sure, but that doesn't mean it's not entirely corrosive. It's just less corrosive.
Less corrosive.
It's a much cleaner product than the one we're currently using.
I wanna make sure you understood that answer.
Yeah, and, and one of the things that might help capture some of that is, I think slide.
If you guys can go back to the slide.
Yeah.
Number four.
Chloric chloride challenges. You can see in the bulk, in the green, the, all the different metals, the nickels, selenium, silver, zinc, you know, all those which would not be existent in the solution we would make by breaking it down out of raw steel. So those, a lot of those combined is part of the corrosive nature, nature.
So let me see if, if we're re, if I'm reading this correctly. So on the green, copper has, under our current, it's a hundred and twelve point nine one. Under the potential new, it would drop down to two point five six. Am I reading that correctly? That's how to work with the numbers.
All right, thank you. Will you get, do you need specialized training for this new technology and will that cause an increase in possible staff?
So since Roy and, and Vladimir are the pioneers on this, they're training themselves. We'll need training on the generate, generators and the use of that through AMS, but it'll actually, I don't think it'll reduce our labor, but I don't think it'll add any additional.
Okay. The life of the generators and will AMS provide support after installation?
AMS will provide support after installation. I don't know what the total life of the generator would be per se, but that's a good question. I could find out and I can get back to you on that.
And how long is the trial period?
So we haven't defined that yet. After we work with engineering, the engineering firm will work with us and say, hey, how long of a period do we wanna have to say this is gonna be good or bad?
Is, is that something you'd have to run by the state?
I was gonna say, it's gonna be really dictated by the state. They might wanna see it run for, so it's, it's gonna be integrated. We'll bring like one generator out online, reduce the amount of ferric chloride and then we're bringing in a second and a reduction. And as, as we go through those steps, the state's gonna sign off. And when we get to a hundred percent reliant on the generator breakdown, then the state will say, okay, now you're done. Were the trial period through IL Utilities and AMS contract their agreement? I don't know exactly what that looks like because we haven't seen it. Before we want, we got any further down this road, we wanted to see if council was supportive of, of moving forward. And then we can start looking at the contracts and those details.
Okay.
And we didn't wanna lead anybody on if this wasn't something council wasn't interested in.
Two more questions and I'm, I'm done, I promise. Is the, is the final cost, and I, I understood the whole, the whole flow, they pay them, da, 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 da. Is the final cost contingent on state acceptance? I mean, regardless of whether or not it works for us, the, we won't get charged unless the state signs off on it as well. Is that accurate? Because if it works for us, but the state says, no, we don't wanna go that direction, are we stuck with the cost?
I would say that's what the language would need to include is that it is contingent on it working for us and that the state approves it.
Okay.
I would assume that's correct as well.
Okay. And because it's a new technology, and this is more towards Heather, because it's a new technology and a lot of the technology now a lot of the grants coming this way through rural communities involve, hey, if you have new technology, ask us, is it a possibility of grants moving forward or because it's such a brand new one?
You, we can look at it. The unfortunate part is since we're setting this up to be risk-free to us, it means though.
Supplementation.
Because we're, we're buying, it's all being bought beforehand and usually, as you know, grants, you need to have the grant in place before you make the purchase.
True.
So, but going forward, if there's other things that, and, and we can check to make sure, I don't wanna assume all grants are that way, so we'll keep our eyes open to it, but there is that difference. Us setting it up to be risk-free for us means all that purchases upfront and we only reimburse. So that may not qualify for grants type of thing, but we'll keep our eyes open.
Okay. And I lied, I did have one more. So fiscally speaking now, the cost of it looked to be around six hundred thousand, about, about. How much would it cost on the flip side to have to completely replace that tank or that water treatment plant or anything along those measures, just to give us an apples to apples?
And how much are we spending on the chemicals too, from a going perspective?
That's a great question. You know, it's, yeah, we spend, I don't know, we, well, we spend a lot of money. I think it's a hundred, around, give or take a hundred thousand in ferric a year. We have to replace that with the raw steel plates. We feel that that's still cheaper, looking at the numbers, the amount of product to get versus the bulk. So we think that's gonna, that's gonna be a positive. We just don't know exactly how much.
Okay, like for itself over time, okay.
Yeah. Go ahead.
Um, no, I'm all. Well, and I don't, maybe you were getting to this, that initial six hundred thousand, Harry was talking about kinda being earmarked. Initially, why it got set aside is the repairs to the chemical room, but we're not sure that's even enough. So if we were to stay with the current and have to repair the chemical room, we're probably talking in excess of that type of situation. Is that correct or?
A lot of it determines on the level of corrosiveness that's happened within the, the bar joists in the, in the roof. It might just be able to be cleaned and, and repainted. We don't know. So some of this is just, again, it's, it's preliminary idea proposal because we don't, we don't wanna say, hey, we're interested. Get all the information that from AMS and IL Utilities, put the effort in and say, oh, I didn't have the support by council to move those forward. But the six hundred and forty thousand is just for the equipment. We have, you know, the other costs on top of that, so.
And not only just fixing, but then doing an HVAC system that would try to reduce damage going forward as well. It was gonna be pretty expensive.
And I don't wanna speak for Roy since he's there daily, but I think we've, we've got a better control over that. We still have one more option if needed, but you know, as Roy goes in, in the morning, he'll see a red color on the floor and that's just the, the evaporation and the iron settling down on the floor. So daily, I think daily, he washes out this floor because there's just so much iron and manganese in that chemical.
Okay, Council Dominguez? And I'm sorry, she clarified the two, okay. Counselor Hensley, you might wanna take his.
So a couple of questions, you, starting off with the six hundred million or six hundred thousand that obviously the electrical, things like that. So some of those expenses will have to incur regardless. And so if, let's say worst scenario, it's not a good fit, it's just sort of an investment we've did, did it. Is it something we could use for the other stuff or? Do you, do you see what I'm saying?
Other stuff.
So I don't, so if it's not a good fit, we don't have to reimburse them. So we still have our six hundred that's been earmarked that then try to make the current system work better.
But we're gonna be having to put new electrical.
But they're paying for all of that upfront.
So I don't believe they're paying for the upgrade to the plant necessary to run the operation. They're paying for the innovation of the equipment purchase and being in place. So we would have that investment regardless, whether it, if it's successful or not. So we would have that investment regardless, whether it's if it's successful or not. It's gonna be three-phase power bringing brought in for these generators, which will take quite a bit of electricity. So there will be some cost in that.
What is ballpark? Are we talking hundreds of thousands?
We were thinking through our conversations with our partner Vladimir, between the engineering and the construction. Needs, we're kind of guessing three to four hundred thousand.
And then another question in regards to um. Oh, when you asked the question, uh are is anybody else doing this and it's just us at this point?
Pioneers.
So uh so are they looking to others or are they looking at this point like? Like, is their goal to get more doing this sort of at the same time or is their goal, hey, we want one pioneer to see how this works?
I think I think AMS's goal, because they're building generators regardless, I think they use them in different capacities. But they they see the need in communities that have arsenic levels and the potential of using this technology for it. And I think what's exciting is you have this global entity looking at this technology and say, hey, there's a real need for this and we really support it. I was on their website today and it's it's amazing their staff and the level of education that their staff has. Because they're all, you know, PhD environmentalists and and PhDs in in water. Technologies and stuff, so they're. IL Utilities is a big group, and I don't think if AMS didn't have their support, we would be that that. Committed, but I think having their support and their expertise, looking at the technology serves a lot of uh value.
Okay, thank you. Those are my questions. You got it.
Okay.
There's two things you mentioned that caught my eye and and sparked my interest was um. That the A AMS, is that what it is? Looks to help communities in need who just can't get the funds to do something big like this. So I'm that that's cool with me, but you also then said that um they also look to help with the environment. What can you expand on that? How, if we were to do this, how would this help the environment?
So it, if if we go back to the one slide that says carbon footprint, that would be more helping the environment. So by being able to generate this chemical within a facility or onsite. Like if you look at the broader schemes of things, like if everybody did that, then there's a possibility of taking hundreds of trucks off the road. That have potential to do damage to people. And then we're looking at them, these big chemical manufacturing companies that are using these corrosive materials to make this chemical and have this hazard gas go in the air. So you have to look at the broader, the whole picture when when we're looking at how they can help. What they're doing can help the community and and the whole world itself and maybe not just a small community. Other than helping us to make a chemical on demand and for our supply and our needs at the city, so.
I'd encourage going to I IL Utilities website. It is a very interesting read and and. Yeah, they're certainly trying to make an impact. IL ISLE Utilities.
And I've I've supplied some papers here. Um I'll just touch base real quick. This is a white paper. I helped work on with one of the people from AMS. So it it explains um our small-scale pilot that we ran, the technology, how it works. And this got accepted to a couple of shows that we gave presentations on about big shows, engineering places. And this one that. Is from the Source Magazine. This is Aqua Matriology System. This was actually published in the American Water Works Association of California. Under new technologies and and stuff that can be advancement to water treatment plants. So this isn't something that we we just, me and Harry popped up and said, oh, here it is today. Let's go chase this, right? We've been looking at this since two twenty twenty-two and actually started the work since then. So we've we've done a lot of work and we've done in-house, in-house testing, along with in-house small-scale pilot. To prove that this can work, um it's a viable alternate to. That it can work. Are we saying that it's the silver bullet, like you were saying, that it's gonna fix everything, you know? I don't ever think there's a silver bullet, but this is an alternative replacement to what we're currently using now. And we know by our trials that it can work and with IL and AMS partnering up. It does alleviate that risk of saying, hey, if this doesn't work, we're not stuck with it. We just take, come pick up your stuff and go because there. But if it does work, we are committed to this, so.
Will the public notice anything in the difference of the water? At all?
Hopefully, at the end of the day, like Harry touched on, we may have that thirty-eight percent reduction. In discolored water issues. And we have a production and other stuff too going in there, so they won't notice it because it's clear, right? But we know that something will will be happening.
With the taste of the water or anything, for those, any drinking issues or concern?
That'll be safer than when when we go through the the state testing and that period. We're we're gonna have people watching us really close what we're doing. It's not, it's gonna be me going there touching butts and doing stuff. We're gonna have some pretty heavy oversight um on us. What was going on to ensure, because we are dealing with the public safety, um to make sure that everything is safe leaving the plant. And it can it can continue to be safe leaving the plant, one this it's successful.
The the chemical we're using to bind the arsenic is going to be the same. At the end of the day, whether it's bulk or through the electrolysis, what you're using through the treatment is it comes together. It's the same logic. It's just how do you make the the composite of the chemical?
Okay.
I think one of the ways Harry touched on was that the current bulk ferric is made like if you just. In Detroit, the good cars, they smash them up metal of who knows what source. That's where you have all those contaminants. This is made through certified steel, so we know what's exactly in it, so we have a cleaner chemical.
I think Carson and then Hensley. Okay, Carson, you, did you have your mic on?
Yeah, I did. So. Three questions. Uh I guess the first one, just for clarity, this paper is a little confusing. It says, while the city's existing treatment scheme can achieve greater arsenic removal efficiency. It would require additional chemicals and an increased ferric chloride dose of twenty-five, forty milligrams to reduce arsenic levels to five PBL. Or that's, I have no clue what that means, but it but the beginning is confusing because of this paragraph, it says. The electrically generated ferric reg- regent provides a higher efficiency in arsenic removal compared to the bulk ferric chlorides. The safeguard H two O electronically generated demonstrates a higher arsenic treatment using ferric. Okay, so which is true? Does the new technology, is the new technology more efficient or the old technology?
So um the beginning is is talking about if we had to go down to five part per billion. Which it's in the back of the EPA's mind to lower that limit from ten to five. That we can do it, but we're gonna have to use a lot more of the current chemical that we have to do that. With this technology, we can, what it's saying is that we can use less of the newer chemical. To obtain the same arsenic results or better going in the future. So this would set us up to saying we can use less chemical win. And if they actually lower down the MCL from ten to five, we could be putting less of the same chemical to achieve greater results.
So it's like a cleaner.
A cleaner chemical because we're we're having more of the chemical we need for the removal and less of the constituents that are floating around in the water.
So. So that brought on, that itself brought on the need to look at this new technology. Okay, so what are the odds or how quick could you catch? Like a poison, like let's say you should, let's say you mess up, let's say the chemical process messes up and you dump something bad in the water. How quick, what's the, what's the contingency plan to find bad batch water going into the system? That could poison somebody. You understand what I'm saying? Because you're making this stuff in-house and there's got to be a quality control from you to the dumping it in the in the bin. Where does that happen? Like, how do we catch that? Because I I try, you know, you're an expert, you're a pioneer, so and we're pioneering stuff in the valley all the time, so I'm not negating that you could do it cleaner. What I'm saying is how do we catch that? If, you know, if nationally they're sending this fluoride out or this chemical out. And you get a plant here that somebody's getting sick because the chemical batch was bad, then that long set, you know, an investigation or whatever, they stop it, stop production. If we're making it in-house, what are the odds that that could happen? And if it does happen, how quickly do we catch it before a hundred people on a block go?
So.
You understand what I'm saying?
There's always odds of something of something happening.
Yeah, no.
So there's always odds, so so the way that it would be set up would be that. I would take tests of the chemical that we're using to lab, have it certified, so it's a known. And I know exactly what I'm putting into the water to remove the arsenic. Um right now, I don't get all that stuff on the chemical we currently use, so I would say right now is probably.
You're gambling anyway.
Yeah, I'm gambling anyway, but I would be using a cleaner chemical in the long run for that. We'll set up protocol to make sure that this it meets those standards before we use it too at the same time. And have a backup of the current ferric we have. In case something does happen, we could switch back to that and have, still have a arsenic-free water, or not arsenic-free, but reduced.
Because I remember when the new plant opened, you guys were, I mean, you guys were hammered anyway from oversight standpoint constantly. Has that oversight? Like, have they backed off or what's the reporting time? Like, like, you know what I mean? Like, how 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 quick's that turnaround or you doing that? You were doing it like every day at one point, I remember. I thought, like you you talked about, you were doing it like quite a bit, you were having to turn in samples. Is that still like, are they really stringent or are they?
So the oversight from that point has has died down. We're just have to um comply with our monitoring schedule that we have every year for the state. I do, at the plant, I have an. An arsenic analyzer that will give me results within ten, fifteen minutes, so I know if the process is working. And I measure it every other day, so I know what the arsenic is in in the facility. The other constituents, I would take it to a lab and have them analyze to make sure that we're good on that end. So um I would be heavy on my own oversight to ensure that this works on the process.
There might be, as as if we were to go forward with this, it's gonna really. Be determined by CDPHG because they're gonna, they're gonna be monitoring and watching and and looking closely because they're interested in it as well. They're gonna probably tell us what we need to be aware of and how often to test and for what to test. But bulk ferric chloride is such a dirty nasty bulk chemical that comes in. We're taking clean, pure steel and breaking down the iron composite is really what we're doing.
And at the end of the day, the state is gonna say whether it's a go or no, like we're. We're gonna have the information in front of them. It may take them a month, two, six months, whatever, to say, hey, this does work. They showed us the information. Here you go, or they're gonna say, come back again, have a nice day.
It's just.
And so one more question, let me just real quick, from a planning standpoint on a daily. You know, we always hear about logistics here. Logistics is always a issue. Is there a direct, because we're getting this new cleaner compound that you're producing in-house. Is there a direct savings or a direct cost increase? I mean, either one would be logical. How, what is it looking like?
I think we're anticipating a little bit of a savings through the savings in in chemical uh uh production or purchasing.
And if you guys could go back to the slide where we covered that on the um benefits of it, that would be great.
And in in the beginning, uh Counselor Carson, Roy and I are here just to say, here's an option and an opportunity. What current process right now, it works. There's there's challenges with the brown water and the and the ferric chloride. This is just an opportunity for us to look at, is this something that we want to evolve to? So.
I read about it after the presentation.
Okay.
Yeah, no, I so I'm I'm familiar with it already and I was I was dealing with medical issues. I actually just got some bad news and I'm debating staying for. On my health, so I was on the phone with my doctors. I apologize for being late. But I did read when you guys looked at it, that's why I'm kind of curious. I mean, it does sound like a way better thing and the the reality is that. I don't know if you guys turn on the news anytime, but the reliance on outside. You know what I mean? We have, we have to be somewhat self-sufficient in the valley. Being able to do that to keep our water clean in Alamosa is kind of paramount. Because if they, you know, you know, you go a thousand miles in any direction, it's chaos. And so I I'm a big fan of stuff like this, so that's good.
Right now, we are relying upon chemical, big chemical manufacturing companies for these chemicals. That that is a reliance.
So I don't want to cut this short, but I know Counselor Hensley and then I didn't know if we wanted to then try to open it up to the public or not.
Uh seven, six forty-five, we'll go ahead and do that. Counselor Hensley.
And I think this is quick. Um so overall, I'm liking what I'm hearing. I just asking questions, just obviously to cover all the bases. From an insurance standpoint, because this is new and cutting edge, will that affect, or you may not know this, but the insurance, you know, the insurance. The city has in the sense of these type of things.
I would assume it wouldn't because it'd be, it would be approved by a regulatory agency.
Okay.
So I think any process that we use that they support, it would wouldn't change.
So, okay. Sorry, I just, I'm thinking all different.
I mean, obviously, anytime we make major improvements to facilities, we need to update the cost from a replacement and all that kind of stuff. But.
I wasn't even thinking. I was thinking more in the sense, is it considered from an insurance because it's new, riskier?
I would, I would say back to Harry's, once you get the regulatory approval.
So that's where I was, so we're good. Thanks.
Okay, since this is the first time, we're gonna try to implement this process in a work session. We're gonna open it up uh to the public for comments, only no back and forth. We're gonna give the, anyone in the public who would like to make any comments, we have three minutes. We will be timing this. If you're still talking at the three-minute mark, we will politely ask you to end your comments in regards to uh this work session matter. So I'll go ahead and open it up to the public for any public members who would like to make any comments. Just let me know and I'll give you this mic and you can make your comments.
Well, and we have a microphone at the table behind us as well.
Okay. Okay. I don't see anyone in the public at this time uh making any comments in regards to uh this issue.
Is there anyone on the public through Zoom and do they have any hands raised?
Uh there is one attendee, but they do not have their hand raised.
Okay, at this point, whoever the attendee is, if you would want to make a comment, please raise your hand. I'm seeing the shake of the head. No, Mayor.
Okay, thank you so much. Well, seems like all the council members have asked their questions. Am I correct in saying so? Thank you also very much for the presentation.
So I'm just gonna, I know we're not voting or anything like that because this is a work session. But if we were to progress with these discussions and they become more serious, are you guys comfortable with that? And obviously, any agreement would come back before you. Yes, for me, from the fiscal and the safety and the opportunity to. Show the country how cutting edge we are um with the guaranteed oversight and the no cost. I'm I'm for it. Harry, did you get everything you needed?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Alrighty.
Thank you.
Jackie, we're gonna end this session and then restart it. So we have separate recordings for the work session and the Zoom council meeting. You can use the same login that was sent to you to re-log into the new one, but give us about five minutes.
Okay, sounds good.